What about the L P? Before we get going, if you guys can just please me for a quick minute. Much to how many people know Walt had had a tragedy this past couple of days? And um. We take a moment of silence for Arthur Tracy from Waltham PD. Mister Jackson from National Grid lost his life yesterday. Thank you. Is our applicant here?
Yes.
You wanna come up?
You can bring up another chair.
So um.
Want to open the here?
Before we open the hearing, I just I wanted to discuss with the board. We still have outstanding?
It was just discussed and there will be a check tomorrow morning. The the that was for the application fee, but it's the advertising.
All right, it's saying motions of way to read.
Motion to have the reading.
Second one. All favor. Alright, so we are here for fifty five mechanic street.
So I can give an overview of why I sent them here. So um, this is fifty five mechanic street, um, the applicants um, had uh, have owned the property for how long?
Oh, twenty five years.
Okay, so it's a residential dwelling as uh, and it's in the business district. Um, so um, they um, I don't know, maybe ten years ago or so, uh, they moved out?
Nope, we uh. Two thousand and thirteen.
And they've owned it, you know, for that whole period, they um, they had a business up on uh, South Main Street. Um, and they are downsizing and they'd like to return back to uh, mechanic street. And the reason why they're here tonight is um. You know, when you um, when you wanna have, when there's a residential um, uh, dwelling in a business district. And um, they uh, and you wanna occupy. The residential, the uh, business aspect becomes accessory. And with that fact, it requires a special permit from the Z P A. Uh, we've done it for um. The most recent one we did it for was uh, mechanic, I think it's probably up around um. Uh, the one hundreds Faragamo, uh, he's doing a repair garage with his son. Yes, uh, it's very similar to that champion fence on South Main Street, same situation, they wanted to live in the. The um, the house and have the accessories of the um, fence company, which is in the allowed in the business district. This is a lot like that, um. They can describe the nature of uh, their business and the hours that they would like to be open. Um, but they do wanna occupy the dwelling for their primary residence and have the accessory for um, power equipment repair. So uh, with that being said, if you wanna explain the nature of the business.
If you could state your name and current address for that.
Sure, uh, Robert Chino. Um, eight seventy South Main Street. And um. I'm a little bit confused, to be honest with you, because back in two thousand and eight. I built this garage. This garage was solely intentioned to have town line power there. Um, I actually got a business permit to be there. I've never changed the use in the past fifteen years, so two thousand and eight. Uh, so I have never changed any uses or anything. Um, I've always occupied the garage as town line power. I've always got uh, business certificates with town line power being on there since that building was built. I was, so I've never had to go in front of any boards or anything. The other billing inspector, I said, hey, I need a place to run my garage. Um, it's a story, you know, and I need to do it, he says, well, why don't you do it where you are, you're business zone. So I built that garage solely for town line power, I never built that garage to put my car in or do anything like that. I don't think my car has ever been inside that garage.
So I I remember when you built the garage, um. How do I do this politically correct? It it was done incorrectly at that point? Um, the way to do it is the proper way to do it. Because again, you're occupying the the residents too. And. The the garage is quite a big of the home, it's right, remember reading that.
It's almost the same size, basically the garage is twenty eight by thirty, and I think the house is.
The by law actually states nothing more than twenty five percent. Of the occupied space could use the whole business without a special permit. So by doing this, you're actually doing it the proper way.
Fifteen years ago, because I might not have built.
Well, you're sitting in a position now where you you can take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Have you do it properly is is not wrong.
Cause I, cause I wanna look back there, my thing is I, I trying to downsize. And that's, and I said myself, I got this piece property over on mechanic street, I'm gonna go back there, that's where I, that's where.
We left there in two thousand and twelve and moved up to South Main Street. If the house was occupied by a tenant, we had a tenant in there the whole entire time. And the garage was also being used, cause with COVID and everything, we had, we always had a two cycle guy down there. And if we had big equipment, we took it down there because it was flat. And where we had on South Main Street, we had a big room, so it was always occupied in one way or another.
You remember my last question was, it's the past ten years there, um. I got a bunch of questions, but. Went to over discussion.
Yeah, I guess, so you're saying that it has been the garage, even though your business is located on South Main. You have been, cause what the special permit is to continue the use of the small engine repair.
It's always been used, always, because see, down on eight seventy South Main Street. It used to be uh, casual lifestyles, and what they did is they had like a warehouse space. So everything had to come up on a wooden platform. Okay, so if I brought in, say, a real big machine, like, say, uh, four layers, or I bought something, I couldn't fix it. At something location, I had to bring it to the.
Okay, but to answer the question, I may be totally out of base, um. The the usage may have been being used for what he was using it for. But we're we're trying to do it proper within zoning.
Yeah.
So to make it, I don't know what use for it, legal or proper within high town zone. Even though it was currently currently being used, it was never permitted to be used.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Uh, I think my point is, he wants to reestablish a retail operation. He may have used it for an overflow, uh, may have rented it, that doesn't matter to me. What matters to me now is it's a residential dwelling with an accessory, and that's what he wants to have, he wants to have his, wants to move his whole business back down here. And in order to do that, the board needs to regulate the hours, the impact. And just get an idea of exactly what's going on, so you can, you know, either give him an approval or with some conditions or. You know, um, just so we can make it right, just because the the previous building inspector didn't do it right, he didn't do his job doing zoning, so that's why we're here.
And I think the the way to look at it right now is just like, let's just start pressure.
Right.
You want to open the business, bring the business there, we need to look at how it's gonna impact. But that's what, that's what we're here to look at, sure, we we, what's happened in the past, we need to kind of put that back there.
It's kinda hard to do that now.
I know, but let's just do it properly now, and just get it done one way or the other.
So um, could you just clarify, just with the small engine, would kinda?
We do small engine repairs, such as one was snowblower waste factors.
So what would be the largest that you'd be looking?
Well, I'm downsizing, so the biggest machine that would probably be working on now would probably be like a tractor. Uh, it was for like a zero zero turn, you know, uh, nothing big like we used to work on.
And um, I mean, um, what times usually work for your business uh, to run from? Do you have a certain uh, window and weekends, not weekends, just weekdays?
I've always been very good to my neighbors and stuff, so I've always made sure I didn't open up before. Eight o'clock, eight thirty, and I always try to close down uh, usually around five thirty, six o'clock. The, you know, depending if it's snowing out and I had to get snow blowers out or something like that, uh, you know, there's different things like that, yes, but. For the most part, I try to always close around five thirty.
Few exceptions, like the snowstorm is coming, we'd be staying there late to get things out, but other than that, we're closed by six.
Okay.
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm not gonna work on Saturdays, we.
What Saturday hours were you thinking? Right now, we're functioning eight thirty to one, eight thirty to one. Yeah, we're debating whether we're gonna keep the Saturdays up or not, but.
Also, I think to to keep in mind that we're working inside the garage on lawnmower snow blowers. It it's, I I don't, doors closed, doors folded on inside the garage, you know, if he happens to be there. You know, five thirty five is our six thirty five, cause he's trying to get something done.
Right.
I don't see a ma, well, I knew, I know we need to set business hours, but I also don't see a major impact, you know.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, was interested in what hours it would be in, I think the most noise would be just moving equipment really in and out.
In and out, and on the trail, and you know, be running, going on the trail, and pulling up.
Right, that's the the major noise really created, which is.
Right, and we're trying to limit as much as people, you know, most of it's gonna be pickup and delivery.
Are there a lot of, any other residential type of structures near you, anybody?
Single family.
Single family right next to you, right?
Fifty one is next door to us, on this side, and then the um, other side is sort of like vacant land, but the house goes. Houses go way up the hill, so he's far off.
There's a new one going, I think, two doors up from you.
Yes.
We're building that out there.
There's residential across the street, I think that's the intent of the regulation, you know, we're trying to um, minimize the impact to the existing residential. By mixtures, so.
It's very close, a couple of doors down from the rental place. Um, what is that place called? Yeah, across the street from this defense.
Currently, you get doing retail sales down there, um, is your intent to stop doing retail sales?
I'm going to slow down immensely doing that, uh, basically, I'm trying to mostly uh, pick up and delivery and stuff like that.
Cause my my concern there is the um, coming and going, the the cars and some people.
Basically, the only thing that's gonna happen with that, instead of somebody brought a snow blower in, and we couldn't repair it, and they wanted to buy a new one. We pick them up as we need them. And get them out to them, we don't have the retail space there really to store, to store anything, and that's not our intentions. So we can just have an auction uh, down at South Main Street a few weeks ago, to get rid of some of our floor plan. And then um, areas is gonna be coming to pick up the rest of them, so you'll have a few small pieces on the property.
So you're not gonna, you're not gonna go back in a full blown retail?
No, no, I I'm downsizing. The biggest problem I have is since COVID, um, it's hard getting help. Um, so I love, what I did is I basically took my two best guys, and we went down there. Um, so that's pretty much what I'm doing, that's it.
That helps us look at the floor traffic.
Right. Um, so when. When we hear something like this, I always say, okay, well, if I'm a neighbor, what would I be concerned about, I mean, one of them would be noise. Um, you know, operating lawn mowers and blowers and things like that. Not the same duration as like a landscaper would come, but that would be something that I would be concerned about. That I would be concerned about the visual aspect of of the business in terms of outdoor storage. Um, of, cause when you repair something, you might wanna keep it outside or. Or, you know, so I would be concerned about the visual part of it all. And I wouldn't want the operations to occur, you know, like, let's, you have both garage doors open. You can see right in, and you know, there's noise coming out of pneumatic tools and whatever, she want. The idea like Tim says, to keep everything sort of self-contained, so what I'm thinking of is um. No outdoor work, doors closed, no outdoor storage of any kind. Though we, I would say no retail sales, I just uh, no storage of hazardous materials. Cause that that, and um. So that would be three employees or possibly, I don't know how that works, if you have two people working, you. Three people operating out of there plus customers. Sort of like.
Wouldn't have customers, so basically, I'm doing ninety five percent um, pick up and delivery.
We're gonna, it is eventually, you know, there's gonna be one or two people come down there, I can't say, you know, we can stop people. Once they find out where we've gone to, um, we do have, there is two spots in the front of the, in the front of the house. Where we used to park, so I would say, even if I put up a sign, you know, ten minute parking, something like that, you know. Just so that they could park there and not.
I'm not trying to do, I'm not trying to do what I did down South Main Street, I'm trying to downsize, basically, it's this.
He's been advised to retire and.
And that's what I'm trying not to do.
Didn't wanna give it up completely, so this was the only alternative before.
I built, I built this many years ago, I spent a lot of money to what I put over a hundred and forty thousand dollars invested in that garage down there. Um, I thought that this is what I could do when I retire, and then all of a sudden, one day it blew up in my face that I can't do it.
Yeah.
After I resold down there, you know, it's, it's like somebody went, if somebody went and punched me. Something like that, it would have been better off than where I am today.
So I I I need to elaborate on something that Brian's brought a couple of things that, that I may disagree with you on. No sales, absolutely, storage of outside, I mean.
I I mean, the problem is I can't not store, I mean.
We have a con next box, right now, next to the garage is, it wasn't.
Yeah.
And it got destroyed, but the frame is still there. We had one down there, we moved it, so that's what we're planning and doing, and bringing it back there and putting it next to the garage, so when the equipment is finished. Until it gets delivered, it'll go in there, or anything overflow.
You're gonna need to get that perfect, right?
Well, yeah, my con exercise would be, so you explained before, you're gonna have a fence, right?
I have Mr. Fence putting up a fence.
Thought would be, would would not be visible.
Nobody's seen, nobody's seen it.
Yeah, that's fine, if you construct a fence and.
So you're gonna run fence across the back of the house, basically, so you got a house fence, then you arrive.
The uh, person back me already has a fence there, so that's already done. Uh, on the side of me is all trees, so nobody can see anything there. And then what I am planning and doing is putting a fence at my property line in the front of the driveway. I'm planning on putting a fence there, and then I'm also planning on putting a fence in the back there, that way, nobody.
So when you when you open the doors, the volume, roll the, roll the equipment out to give yourself workspace.
Yeah.
Will not be visible to streeties, you're doing enough streets that won't be visible.
Most likely, it's not gonna be visible, because you're gonna have uh, you know, the the fence and stuff, then I'm pretty much only going to. Like I said, do mostly pick up and delivery.
What kind of fence were you thinking?
Um, pretty much like a um. A regular fence. I wanna put a black, a black um, wire fence.
We're putting up a run for the dogs, so the the dog is gonna, the dog's area is gonna be a white vinyl fence. And then from there over will be one like the can swing, and then we're putting up the um, mesh. So that you can't see through.
Oh, okay.
So it's different than a chain link, where chain link you can see through, this will be something that has, that you can't visually see through. Oh, perfect, okay.
So I'm I'm trying to try and impact the neighborhood.
I'm I'm also thinking of not just the neighborhood, but people driving by. Um, don't wanna look down the driveway and see the whole front filled with lawnmowers day in, day out. Things that can't be repaired, still sitting there and such, that's the visual, I think.
Yeah, Brian is looking for. And and here's an interesting fact about Brian, I'll tell you. Literally, every night I watch YouTube videos about small engine repair, I don't know why, but I do. I find it interesting, I don't, you know, I gotta get away, but um. But those shows that I watch, I know that part of the repair process is you get a tractor. Someone might say, you know what, that's not worth fixing, keep it, you keep it for spare parts, you salvage it as you go along. And this rotting piece of metal sits there, right, and that's absolutely what we can't have in the center of town.
Scrap, he goes to, he goes to Allied and Malville at least.
Right, but if there's a good carburetor, whatever that.
They'll take it off, it'll be stored upstairs, anything that they can use, he'll strip it and and get it up.
So my only concern is, we don't wanna see a a a that, we don't wanna see ten lawn mowers like that.
It got a little overwhelmed down in South Main Street, let me tell you, because it got, it was in the bath, and then he started scrapping.
Our things, something that we contend with is sometimes, everyone, everyone has good intention.
Yeah.
And seven years from now, things just go wrong, and then we're, then we're left with what we put in the decision for Tim to enforce.
We've been there.
So, yeah, so what I wanna make sure is that for your neighbors and for anyone sort of struggling to the center of town. We just don't wanna see it.
Right.
Um, and we don't, we certainly don't wanna hear it. And the the work has to happen inside, because tools make noise, lawn mowers make noise. All of that stuff, you know, banging, all of that, it's just, you have neighbors. We have to be mindful.
And I was, part of what you brought up, I'm still working through your list.
Yeah, yeah, so that's where I'm coming from, if there's a way.
And I'll give you an example today, because they were in there today, and there was nothing running, guys were upstairs doing parts. And I blew the horn three times, and none of them heard me, and I got on the phone, and I was like, is anybody hearing that I'm here? They never heard the horn blow, and I was right in front of the garage, it was well insulated.
This building was, you know, I mean, you know, there's no walls in the middle of it, I mean, I put a lot of money to this building, this this garage, this isn't your regular. Garage that you have in your house, you know what I'm saying? I'm able to put a lot.
If you don't mind, I I need you to continue on this, cause.
Sure.
I may actually wanna watch Patriots, I'm not quite sure. Two the two things you brought up that I kinda wanna throw up for discussion is. Um, no hazmat materials, that is gonna be very difficult to do for a repair business, not to have leftover oil, I know he's gonna have to. To care properly, border health and all that, but he has to have it there.
Yeah.
He has to have gasoline.
Yeah, gotta have chemicals.
You have chemicals, so that to tell him that he can't have that on site.
It's all regulated by.
They're regulated.
They've been down to to South Main Street. We have two fire cabinets.
We can't regulate that, we put them out of business.
Okay.
Um, and always having the doors closed.
Yes.
That 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 happens. That'd be really tough.
That'd be tough. Eighty five ninety degree day and.
For, for some of the projects that have come before us in the past. The, 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 the bay actives, noise projectors, and there's tools that make noise. Pneumatic tools, I don't give you the answers, but compressed air, whatever you got, you know, all that, all day long.
I'm I'm more familiar with this than I'd let on the board.
Yeah, you watch YouTube.
No, I actually used to train.
Oh, okay. So uh, that, that, what the lesson I have learned is that.
How about that is your garage from the street?
Basically, to almost ten feet from the lot, wine and the wrap.
You have a no from, and and I'm not sure what that.
I think I have a hundred fifty one feet, so I think it's a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty five, a hundred and forty feet.
It's a good hundred feet back off.
Right behind, it's right behind the house.
I know where it is.
Yeah, and the thing is, is that the air compressor, talking about the air, the air compressor is way in the back of the shop. Where the bathroom is, so honestly, it's.
Play front of the garage is about ninety feet coming up, really taking, so.
Probably about a hundred feet.
And if I remember visually, one of the bay doors, the bay door on the right is partially hidden by the house.
The the house pretty much covers most of.
There's only one angle.
And and if you're driving by, it would be like this.
My my concern is this is.
But the noise, yeah.
If if we're going forward to doing approval. Um, not cutting you, cutting you off, so you can't do your business either. So it has to be a I I give and take of what's right for the neighbors, right for the town, and right for the. Yeah, see, I look at it from the eyes.
Is that the property?
Yeah, so that's the house in the front. And garage in the back.
Yeah, it is, actually, I've never seen the garage from this angle, I always see. That's what I thought it was covered off.
It's tough, cause when you're driving by, you're doing twenty five miles an hour, thirty miles an hour, yeah, these lots are very small. You know, so I mean, it's almost like looking down the driveway when you pull by, you know. If you're, if you go by and stop and look, yeah, you're gonna sit down now, right, you can't stop on that road.
So I I mean, go to, you know, our list of traffic generating, we talked about that, environmental, we be handling that. Obviously, we can't have any outdoors displays signage.
They can have a sign.
It's very small.
Well, um, no, cause they're in the business district, so they can have a sign. Uh, i- in a residential district, you can have a home occupation, can only be one by one. For a home.
I'm in B, I'm in B one.
He's in, he is in the business district, he can have a sign on them on. Regulated, he still has to abide by a sign regulation.
Incorrect on them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I used to, I used to have a big sign on on the building itself. And and if you see back, uh, I think it was two thousand and ten, when we had a lot of snow. Bill Sex News did a big article on me with all the snow blows and stuff all front and everything. You know what I'm saying, so I mean, this isn't something that I'm just starting up today.
I think, you know, I can always speak for myself, and and I know what Brian's concerns are, is the visual visibility. Of not having equipment visible from mechanic street. Um, the expense or wherever it's gonna be, cause then again, you're gonna have eight, ten, twelve pieces of equipment with more out there. So the visibility of it and um. Noise.
Yeah.
The largest gas traffic, so I have no retail per se.
I'm not gonna, I used to, I'm not gonna have none, but I mean, I'm not gonna have much.
It's not gonna be on the display.
Yeah.
By no means, like I said, if we keep a few pieces for somebody, if the machine is not repairable, what am I supposed to do, send them to Home Depot to buy it? The ability of selling it?
I used to, I I used to have a big shed, and that used to be my sale, so I used to have, you know, a couple of chainsaws, a couple of small things. But nothing major or whatnot, you know what I'm saying, you know, I go on a work on some my snowball, that snowball is junk, do I suppose to send to Home Depot?
Yeah, uh, my, again, uh, the only thing I'm worried about is visual impacts and noise.
I'm worried about parking, because you have the house and the.
Okay, I got roughly. Five spots, and one spot next to the house, I got um, a piece of property where how I designed it. Was, it has basically two driveways that go up in back of the garage. So I have a spot right here that somebody could park, and on this side here, I can park.
You won't need any street parking.
No, because I have, I have one spot in front of my garage, in front of the house.
That's plenty, and that's right.
The only thing I said was to keep the two parts out front, the customers did come there, they would probably park there and walk down the driveway. But it's gonna be time to, we're not gonna be able to control what somebody come and just to.
I think that's one of the important things here is um, how they're gonna park, that's one of the concerns, cause it's on one forty. So are you planning on coming in, having them come in one side and help the other?
That's how it's always been, it's always been an entrance, so everybody always used to go in between fifty one and fifty five. Go around, and then come back out, and then that's the end, the extra.
You would, you would need some kind of signage. Directional, because nobody can park on on, you're not gonna be, nobody's gonna be able to, it's just a safety issue, right?
I did that, I did that myself, I didn't have anybody telling me to do that, I did that on my own.
So that should be.
So we can put that as a condition.
Yeah, I mean, just, I'm just trying to make things work for everyone. Um, obviously, the house blocks quite a bit of the garage. Could we look at possibly anything that you're gonna be storing outside where you're working on stuff in and out? You store directly behind the house, was not visual from the mechanic street?
Well, when when I had it before, what I had was, I had a uh, um. Conex box, I had two of those um. Uh, one was like a metal, like a metal tent like, and the other one, uh, the frame is actually still down there.
And and actually, that brings up a question I need to, just with you. I, those still regulated by permit for only short term use?
Conex box?
No, the the dome tents.
Cause it's temporary structure.
It's temporary structure.
It can't be taxed, it's not permitted.
I thought you had to get a permit, and it was always, and the permit was good for so much time.
So people come to me, I tell them, you need to put it, uh, you need to abide by your setbacks, you need to in your zone. You know, but a lot of people just throw them up, and then I have to go chase them, so it should be. So it should be residential zones, ten feet suburban, you know, is fifteen, and that's the worst case is fifteen foot. Um, so, you know, uh, the neighbor isn't gonna wanna see a, um, a hoop house right on the lot line. So, you know, we do regulate that because it's zoning, you know, it is still a structure, but it's a temporary structure. That's, we, uh, you know, we definitely make them do that. As far as those goes, but you know, sheds and stuff, those have to abide by, uh, zoning regulation. Yeah, Conex box, you can't just put it on the lot line.
So hoop houses could work for storage.
Sure. If, if they can get them ten feet off the lot line, which you should be able to.
Well, the Conex box is right next door to the, to the building.
I'm talking too much.
I just wanna pay you back there, that's all.
No, I, I asked my questions, but I agree, um, pretty much no street parking. And, uh, if it wouldn't be a problem having the equipment just not visible from street view, either it's in the Conex box or behind the house, as long as that doesn't intervene with your uh, work processes, I think that's if that's reasonable to you, you know, we, that's something we might consider to add.
What happens if I have a, a used tractor that I wanna sell or something, I can't do it?
So, because you wanna put a sale sign on it?
I'm not gonna put up a sale sign, but I'm saying if I put up a, a tractor in front of my piece of property in front of the, in front of the house or something like that. I can't do that.
Yeah, fortunately not.
Not where you live in. That's, that's the, the hick of the zoning, because you're occupying and running a home business. That technically is supposed to be, I'm correct, no retail sale at all.
This was, say fifteen years ago when I built it.
We're not talking about fifteen years ago.
But that's when the building was built, so why can't we go back to fifteen years?
Because you left, you left the building.
No, I didn't.
Look, I'm not gonna argue with you with this. I explained this to you from the beginning. We're here to regulate what you're proposing and we're trying to make it work for you. Before, before is before. Okay, so we're going by the regulation now, not mine regulation, not their regulation, we're going by the book.
This, this is, this, it's been approved by Tom Eaton and unfortunately, this is what we work for. And, um I was actually gonna bring that up, that the concern, having the equipment behind the house stuff is, we don't wanna see it on the front line. Now, if you weren't gonna live there, it's business zone. You could do like you're doing down South Bellingham, with the whole road working out there.
And then nobody can regulate. But if I lived there, it's still.
I know it is, but it's bylaws that we're bound to.
And what, what, can I ask you a question? When was that law enforced?
When it was enforced, when it was
Adopted.
I mean, those change on a regular basis, bylaws can be added, so that particular one.
That was in place ten years ago.
No, it hasn't updated in ten years.
That was probably put in, that was probably adjusted in the seventies, maybe. The, the whole book was, uh, sixty-one, right?
Can I just readdress one thing? And that's the parking situation on the street, on the street parking, cause if a customer does come there, I mean, I wouldn't wanna see them ticketed or towed, just that they're there for ten or fifteen minutes. Cause there are two parking spaces. I mean, it's like the line for the road is here and the parking is right here.
If they're off the road, you're not gonna.
It's my property.
You know, you're not gonna stop anybody from coming there.
Totally makes sense, as long as they're not blocking the road and people have to go around. That's what our concern is.
You know, if, if you've got the elderly or older person that's a timid, doesn't wanna drive up front behind you, they're pack where they feel comfortable and mark out. I, I don't think the ship's gonna send a
No, I just wouldn't want a problem for the, for, for another person to be you know, have to move or something like that, because they're in the wrong place.
Yeah, other than that, it was just the business hours for the noise concern.
Yeah, we, we talked on the business.
Right now, we do, and Tim, what's the rule? No Sundays?
They're, they're allowed by zoning, but you know, it depends on the, whatever hours you guys are gonna give them, that's what they have to go by, because they are.
Monday through Saturday now, so Sunday's up for, then it sounds like Sunday could be a possibility.
That's up to them, but.
Well, the thing is, is that what happens the night before, we have a big snowstorm. And what happens if there's a big hur, you know, hurricane coming, we gotta get it out. And I'm getting out your generator.
We put into the agreement, um, Monday to Saturday, Sundays for emergency use. We're not tying to the ends.
Does that work for you?
I mean, I don't wanna work Sundays, how would you do either on a regular basis?
I'm trying to work as less as possible first.
So that, so I don't, I again, I, it's, it's what happened seven years from now, so that provision is wildly unenforceable. Right? So it's like, oh yeah, it was an emergency. So what I would suggest is you know, the off times that there is a need for them to work, there's a hurricane, there's a whatever. Almost gonna care one, one time, right? It's when it's every Sunday. And if you have a provision where there is at least the avenues to which Sundays could happen for emergencies, who's gonna, who's gonna be able to?
Regulate that, so, I mean.
I would just keep it, and if it happens on a one-off, it happens, but no one's even gonna know.
So keep it what, Brian? With Sundays with a time? No Sundays?
No Sundays.
Monday through Saturday.
Monday, Monday through Saturday. Saturday, you said what, nine to one thirty?
What's it, nine to two?
Nine to two, is that okay? Nine to two, no Sunday.
If we have to be having a blizzard on Sunday afternoon and
I can't get them for a snowball right now.
Everybody else is preparing for a snowstorm, when a snowstorm happens on Sunday, you gotta be just like them.
You, you gotta do what you gotta do.
We understand the, the situation, you have to get it out on Sunday.
But see, if we, if we put Sundays into it, Brian's, I'm sorry, seven years down the road, we got a Monday, seven-day-a-week operation happening. Practically speaking.
What the board's trying to say is if you're gonna, if you start operating every Sunday and the neighbors complain, at least we can go and say, hey, Mark, you agreed, you were only gonna do it on an emergency, now you're there every Sunday, you know, that's, that's all, you know?
It, it's same as the, the police ship coming out, writing a ticket for, for us to pack up for fifteen minutes. No one's gonna I'm not trying to skirt our zoning, but we understand emergencies too.
And the hazardous waste aspect, if you want me to address that, right now we have Western Oil in place for hazardous oil and safety clean for the gasoline, which comes when we have fifty-five gallons on the beach. And when they get close to being filled again.
That's all permanent regulated.
That is actually a small quantity in regards to the, uh, fight about the regulation, so, but the fight about will be going through that.
Yeah, so we're, it's, that's not an, I presume, per se.
I think you guys have covered it. What I would suggest is that we, um make a motion to approve it or to draft.
Well, I think what we need to do is open it in the public, then close the hearing.
Right, but I'm just suggesting, I think that whatever we do tonight, that we make a motion to either draft a favorable decision or an unfavorable decision. And then we would have an opportunity over the course of next month to look at the conditions and the, how the conditions are laid out in that decision. And then formally approve that decision next meeting.
That's gonna push him out another thirty days. You don't think that within that time we could draft a decision and I could send it and you guys could either say to me, this looks good, like, without sending it to everybody, and then he could be good to go? Or do you feel like it would need a meeting to discuss that? If we go over the conditions now, that shouldn't be hard to draft up.
No, we're, we're now putting it in January. And then thirty days, we're fielding there, being a fed where it's a home occupation.
Fine, we gotta figure out the conditions.
Other house, I mean.
I think you, you guys need to move in there, is that what?
Basically, right now, if you don't do this tonight.
Yeah, no, we don't want that.
When I did this, I said to myself, at this point, nobody can stop me, I would be able to do this, and now I'm not. Now I have to go through the media and whatnot. I'm gonna be really honest with you. I'm on really eggshells, because that's what I did, is I put over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that building down there. That now I didn't wanna make it into a, a two-car garage. That was never my intent, that's why it's three floors.
But we also have to
But I'm just saying, I can't be here next month, because I gotta find a place.
We can talk about the conditions now, I, I didn't know if there was.
I gotta open the public first. Anyone in the public has comments, question, concerns? Just Angela, see you now here, now. Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
So gentlemen, lady.
So, uh, what I would suggest is that, uh, that the any outdoor storage of any kind of materials is screened. The subject to the hours that we talked about, uh, Monday through Friday, what were the hours?
We have Monday through Friday, um, did you want, I think you said eight thirty? Do you want eight o'clock to six?
Yes. I'd rather tell, I'd rather tell you eight, I'd rather tell you eight to six and then
Eight to six, and then Saturday, we have
Nine till two?
Do you want nine to two? Do you want eight to one? What?
We, well, can we do eight to two?
Does eight to two work for the board?
I don't major issue that.
Eight to two, okay, no Sundays. Um, there will be a fence, was the next one that we talked about in the front?
There'll be a gate up.
A gate? With mesh? Okay, there will also be one sign per the sign by law.
Um, actually, we're asking for more than one sign. We're also asking for directional in and out.
So, are you okay with one, one sign for your business and then one sign for directional parking?
I think he has two signs.
Okay.
I have arrows.
Okay. And then?
We talk about hazmat, materials are all regulated. Um, no retail. Those, those are gonna be the, the retail sales and the out, outdoor storage that, that's visible from.
And no outdoor work, no work is outside of the garage.
How do I supposed to do that though, when it's a tractor doesn't start or something like that, I'm gonna have to get it running?
He, he means no repair outside, he means. In the garage.
Rolls, blocks out.
You're gonna be pushing things in and out.
Not to have one of the mechanics roll, just roll all the way outside and do a sharp lock or full engine replacement out of the driveway. And that's what Brian's getting at. If, if you ever jumpstart a, you know, spray some cop cleaner in there, get this baby running, get it in your garage.
Sometimes they come in, non-stop, but no start on the trailer. They go out there, they spray some.
That's
But no.
So no full service outside?
But the thing is, though, is that I had a Conex box, so I need to have my Conex box back. If you don't want me to put stuff in the yard and stuff, I need someplace to put stuff.
Right, so Conex box, you know.
Yeah, and that was right next to the garage before. If you're looking at the garage, it was to the left.
Yeah, where, if, if you're in, if you're in front of my garage, it would be on the side.
Left side.
That's what you said.
Yeah, with hoop houses.
Where the tent is now.
We, we need to ask Tim about the Conex boxes. What's the regulations?
So, you got, I'm sure you can meet the site setback.
Oh, definitely, probably twenty-five feet.
Yeah, Conex boxes are permitted, um, they're permitted by the month, or you can do it by the year.
Are you sure that's what it's called?
It's steel box that came off.
So every business, all businesses around town have them, Walmart has ten of them, um, you know, uh, all the places, bunch of places.
It's gonna be behind the house, so it's not visible from the street, right?
It's back, it's back.
It keeps everything dry and clean.
So one Conex box, right?
I had one Conex, I had a, a Conex box there, and then I also in the back had a metal.
One behind the garage.
That's there now.
There now?
Didn't you say it's there now?
It was, it's a big, it's a metal. Down on, uh, South, South Main right now, um, it's, um probably about fourteen, it's not big, it's about fourteen feet by six feet maybe, seven feet.
And I'll tell, tell them to walk in?
Basically like a truck body.
Yeah, yeah. And that would be directly behind the garage?
I have a, I have a big fence in the back, so I, I, nobody can see any back. I have propane, uh, tanks, nobody can see my propane tanks back there.
Even the people who are behind? Fence on the adjacent property. As long as it's screened, uh, I ain't gonna put these big gigantic storage containers, right? Cause if I was a neighbor, I'd be like, what's this? So the neighbor directly behind him is a business as well. Their business zone as well, um, they're, they came in and fixed up the property, made it look good. Nobody lives there though, that's why they don't have a special permit. Because it's just a business, as you, yeah. As long as it's screened, I think, right? No more than two, one behind the house. Yeah, no more than a fourteen-foot one, right, is that the?
I think it's fourteen to sixteen, I was, no, I, I never measured it, so it's fourteen, whatever goes in back of, of a, of a box.
So not bigger than sixteen?
Sure.
Sixteen feet line?
If I can just maybe help the board too, you, you're recreating what was already there. Go right back to his footprint, what was already there.
What was, what was there was two sheds, the, um, and these are all permitted, these are all got permits on, um, and if I add a metal shed, that was it, metal, and that's still down there.
Why is, is issuing permits, it's not it's gonna, it's gonna do two things, it's gonna keep the visibl- visibility from the street away. That's the important part.
If you tell me they can have three storage things or two storage things, that's what I'm gonna go with. I, but they do have to meet the zoning, right? They can't be close to the lot, and that's, that's the regulation, so whatever you wanna put in your decision, I'll you know, enforce.
Yeah, I guess that was the question I was thinking, was that they had to be within the setbacks, right? I don't see how it could be on the left or right of the garage, it looks pretty tight. Like behind the house, it seems.
Yeah, he's good, they're, they're, I'm su- sure.
Maybe it could get squeezed up.
I'm sure he can make ten feet.
You, you have a look at the, the garage, you're not
There's something there now.
That was actually, uh, old back.
I suppose we'll move on with what you're working on. Um, and we have no retail sales, correct?
Do we have to say anything about displaying tractors or anything in front of the home?
And no equipment?
Different from like, if I have a, if I have my lawnmower in front of my house, and I put for sale, that's, that is a one-off as a residential person. But if they as a, it's a business has a perpetual tractor in front of their house, because I don't think that's, the, they could skirt the intent by saying, no, I don't, just, you know what I mean, like?
I don't disagree, I don't think that's his intent to skirt anything, I think he's, he's trying to hold everything to the letter. Listen to what he's saying, but I Listen to what he's saying, but I think if it's, if it's in the decision, it just takes away that possibility totally.
So do you want no retail sales in the front of the property?
I know, it's no retail sales, but no display.
No display of.
Along the front of the property along the gang street.
So, so let me get this straight. So no retail sales, he he is retail. You mean no retail display. Cause he is a business.
What I said, if somebody needed to.
But he's still, he's gonna be selling um, parks and. I don't, you can't really call it no retail sale.
Could we say no retail display at the front of the property?
It is a, it's a retail business.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, but so, so, but they're gonna be, people are gonna be buying parts and stuff. You know?
That was actually gonna be part of my question.
So I think, you know, retail display in the front of the house, I think is, would be, uh, you know, the intent of not, you know, having that impact.
No storefront, no.
Exactly. They really don't have room in the front anyway. They have two parking spaces and then there's a grass strip, I don't know about four feet wide. So the. They really don't have that.
The main, the main residential home, main of residential home, all of the work happens. So if we could put that in the condition as well.
So I, I, I think.
The front of the home is the home, the back, right, the. Even our office is in the back of the house. We don't have room in the garage.
You can't have like.
You know, we can permit and put it in there that we can do retail. I think what we're trying to get away from. What you are saying is the retail display. But we, he can do retail.
Yes.
Our products not produced on the property. Cause he's going for a special permit.
Yeah, I don't wanna get hung up on terminology. He provides a service, it's, it's a service business, it's not a retail business. But I, I think everybody understands what we're trying to say.
Yeah, we, you don't want fifty tractors lined up across the gang street. But if he has two or three up in the lot of the garage or the customer, his equipment died.
The shed in the back of the house, which is in the back of the house, not near the garage. He sets up as a, has a display of chainsaw, wing whackers, small stuff like that. It's right up against the house.
On the back of the garage too.
Yeah.
That he works most, I mean, it's again.
I think. Yeah, I think what Brian's trying at is, we don't want that display. With, you know. Snowballs lined up and they'll been out there doing demo days all day Saturday and. So we gotta actually take retail sales off of the decision and add no retail display.
I have no retail display of product at the front of the property. Because he's allowed, he is allowed to do it. Right, right. So what I can do, however you decide to vote, we can get the decision, I can circulate it to everybody and then. Once you say it's good to go, for everybody circulating it to me, we could file it however you so choose to vote.
The, was one more we have to add in there that the. Either we vote to approve tonight or disprove, but either way, the final check for the advertising has to be.
We could do the, the, the vote contingent upon, let's see of.
That's all.
It's not even gonna be filed anyway till Monday, so.
It's like when you set out to do a job, you have your proceeds, you have to say we have ours too. Are we thinking about voting on it or waiting to read it all? What would you guys like to do?
I was gonna make a motion to approve the special permit pending the payment and. Um, just final approval by the chairman of the drafted requirements.
Okay, so she can just sign to me and I can.
And you just give it. Put the trust in you.
You comfortable with that?
I'll make that motion as stated.
Subject to the conditions we've created.
We have a motion taken, in second. All is available?
Very good.
Thank you.
Again, we're, we're not here to.
No.
Stop you, nobody's, we want to ensure it's done properly. So tell you this now. Nobody can back you and say, you can't do that. You can do.
I just, you know, honestly, though, Peter, I'd be honest with you, is that I wish it happened fifteen years ago. Because fifteen years ago, I probably wouldn't have done it. The problem is, is that now it's fifteen years later and now, um, you know what I'm saying? That's where I am. Cause I felt that I could just move back to my house. I thought it was okay. I'm gonna be one district. And, and all the people that do small engine repair, they do it right out the back of their house. They're putting well all their property and stuff. I'm not doing none of that, but that's all.
If you put yourself in the neighbor's shoes, would you want someone next to your house doing all that?
I'll be honest with you, I feel that I lived in this town for twenty five years. I bought a house. Because I was thinking about putting a business and the reason why I bought the house that I did was because it was in V one. I could have bought a house anywhere. I could have bought a house down uh, the street that's in a, it's in a neighborhood. I'm not doing that. No.
No.
After the one was being built.
Was eighteen twenty. I went and I took all the, all the dirt and stuff that was in the back. I built the garage and stuff, cause it was in a V one district.
Alright, so we, we need to see, but also um, formalities of this. Um, she'll get that to be.
Monday morning.
Monday morning. I'll read it and send it right back to her. And then we do have. Twenty day bill basis. So in case someone in the town wants to appeal it on you.
They can appeal it on their own.
No, you look on the bottom. There's on the bottom of it.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so next up on our agenda. At least she's still here. Angela. Lakeview Estates.
Hi Angela.
Hey Angela.
I'm here.
Angela, we haven't seen you in a long time. What do we have?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm here to talk about how you hopefully won't be seeing me too much more. Uh, for the record, Angela Conforti, or for the applicant, uh, just to update you on everything that's been happening since the last time I saw you. Which I think was in May. Uh, we're just continuing to wrap things up in the development. The as builds are done, we have all the certificates of compliance except for. Uh, there are two wetland replication areas that have ongoing monitoring periods. So um, we'll have to request those certificates of compliance after those monitoring periods have expired. Um, we are pushing uh, towards the goal of a town meeting vote for. Uh, street acceptance, infrastructure acceptance, uh, hopefully in the spring. Um, and in furtherance of that effort, this past Tuesday, we had a meeting with. Uh, Amy and Tim and all the other department heads along with myself. Jim Sullivan from Gary Aaron Hellman and Jeff Roloffs, who some of you may know as outside counsel to the applicant. And uh, we were just talking about, you know, how to tie a bow on, on the project and get it to the finish line. So the, our next step, which we talked about on Tuesday, will be a site walk to develop a final punch list. And we're hoping to set that site walk up uh, next week or at least before the holidays. Um, so my letter to you for this evening was a request for an extension of the comprehensive permit. And it also contained a request for the performance bonds to be released. Because at the time, the applicant was comfortable that all the work covered under the bond was completed. But because now we know there will be more punch list items that come out of the site walk on Tuesday, um. I think a, a reduction would be more appropriate once we have a handle on, uh, you know, all of the, the final. I'll call them touch up items, cause I'm not expecting anything major, just um, minor items. So I didn't feel like it would be fair to ask the board for a reduction tonight. Just given that I, I don't have any numbers for you or anything formal. So I'm going to take the bond um. Release or, or reduction off the table for now and hopefully I'll be back. Maybe your first meeting in January after we uh, have a, a chance to put together this punch list and digest it. And ha- have a proper bond reduction request for you. So for right now, I'm just asking the board to extend the comprehensive permit to June first of next year. Which I think might be after your spring town meeting. So we're hopeful a June meeting with you won't be necessary, no offense. But ideally, the project infrastructure will have been accepted by then. So that's, that's what I'm asking you for tonight.
Okay. Any discussion on extension of the permit?
I'm glad we're not doing the bonds, right?
You have anything? So, so we're close. Um, like Angela said, we had a, um, our, they were part of our meeting, um, on Monday. And um, they, they, um, they're in agreeance that they have some issues that um. Um, need to be looked at and quantified and peer review is gonna review the um, their as builds. Um, so we're real close, I think. Um, but as Angela stated, you know, there, there'll probably be some items that you, you, we wanna take into consideration. Before reducing their bond to zero. Um, I, I, I would imagine Angela, based on the um, peer reviews result. Would, would have a um, um, uh, direct, um, you know, um, impact on the amount of the bond reduction.
Right, yep, yep. And um, I, I'm hoping that we can get those numbers together by. I don't know when the board's first meeting is next year, sometime in January.
Um, I think Angela, it, it may take a little bit longer, cause I think what the um, thought is that. Um, we are gonna need to use a peer reviewer to take all those plans and really not burden our staff with doing that. But having a professional, um, probably a consultant that we use with the DPW. And when I talked to Jesse and I talked with um, Chris about this, that we really want it to be incumbent upon our consultant. To really do a thorough review of exactly what's on those plans, looking at, you know, the width of the grass strips. Looking at the basins, looking at all the infrastructure. That I don't believe we're gonna be able to have that by January, but you know, we certainly can try. Yeah, but we've got time if we extend it anyway.
Standing it, um, the only thing I would say Angela, and I'm sorry to push you back another month. Um, if we did, she wants to come back as soon as possible. The February meeting, I'm not here and I don't think we have enough board members to organize in for her. So it would have to be the March meeting. I just wanna clear any expectations.
In getting, we're gonna have to estimate, really it's. It's not gonna be done by January or February, I don't believe, because we really have to give them the whole comprehensive package of everything. And so they have to be on site to do all of that thorough review. I just don't feel it's fair for our staff to do that.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
It's, it really needs to be a consulting engineer that gets out there, because our, our staff, we just can't burden the staff with. With this type of project that needs a really thorough review. And you know, obviously it would be at the applicant.
The reason why I bring this up with Angela is she was asking about the January and obviously it's not gonna work time wise.
No.
God forbid it rolled faster into possibly February. It may not be a good meeting for you to come.
But whenever we're ready, I, I, you know, we'll send over the um, the bond information and get on the next available agenda.
Perfect. So we need to either discuss or get a motion for an extension.
You have no concerns about. They're, they're almost there and they need time to uh, finalize it. So we're, we're pretty close. Alright, so I'll move to extend the comprehensive permit for six months.
I can the motion?
All is available? You can't vote. Alright, you're good. Holiday, we'll see afterwards.
Thank you, you too.
Right.
Bye bye.
So that, that, I'm gonna bring up a point here because this has gone on so long with Lakeview Estates. Um, it was, you asked a question earlier. This came on before hiking on the wood. We have new board members that haven't heard the entire.
Right.
Now how do we?
Right, well, that's why we need a consultant, right?
So, yeah.
But I mean, um, technically, how do we vote our motion if?
Not everyone.
Not everyone has sat through all different hearings on this project.
Technically, their permit expired November thirtieth of this year. So they missed that window on technicality. That, that's not for us to seek them down when, when the deadline is. So they missed that window to come to us in November. So it's, that's their issue, not our issue. In jeopardy.
For making a motion, a voting on a motion, we have.
Right.
It's like Brian missing a meeting, you can't vote or something.
Right.
That we heard when you would.
I think it's when you're approving a project. You have to have so many meetings, you know, um, you can't miss more than two meetings.
But there, there have been meetings that have gone this month and next month.
Who's on hand?
But those are open hearings. The difference is, I think.
When they approved this comprehensive.
The difference is it's an open, that's, we're not in an open hearing.
Okay.
If it was an open hearing and the hearing kept going, here you're simply saying we're gonna give them an allotment to.
Check this out on the board, that's all.
So I will double check Peter on that with Tom House, but I think I agree with Tim that like, we're just not in an open hearing. I think we're covered. But their permit did expire the end of November.
Just trying to cover.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I gotta be honest, I don't think we could get a consultant to, to review the, to accept, you know, bid on it. It's, you know, and then take the job on and complete it by March anyway.
It is a lot to review.
Do we have to question any of your?
Um, watch whatever, whatever works for you guys. That's, it's just the twenty twenty four schedule. If you are okay with this, you can vote it. And then we can post it on the website and I can give it to Tom.
Thursdays you don't want Sunday.
So you're.
Second.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is, you know, every, as everybody's aware, we have to do the MBTA community. Um, we're looking to kick off that subcommittee January and then working diligently to get something, um, hopefully on the town meeting warrant in the fall. Um, so we need a member of the ZBA that wants to step up and serve. I know Liz had said she was interested, but certainly if anybody else is interested. Um, we just need a vote to, to designate somebody to be on the committee.
Well, seeing as Liz isn't here, I'd like to enter the motion to appoint her.
Did send an email. She did send an email, but she couldn't be here.
Yeah, um, motion to.
Well, does anyone else have a burn anxiety who wants to participate? I'm good with that.
I can be the backup if she does not.
Okay.
Choose to.
It has. Your motion, second?
Second.
Um, also for that committee, if you're interested, I think, um, once we get the planning board to do their nominee or whatever they want to do next week. We are gonna have, I think, two citizens at large on that committee, the committee from the public, which would help. Just that way, we get, we've got one member already, I think, from the select board. We'll have one from planning zoning and then two citizen residents. And then we'll have the committee. And just Laura's minutes.
The only change I have in the minute, if you call it a bit late somewhere in the minute, that I refuse myself for the.
Sure.
And then I would move to progress and. And then I would move to progress and.
Um, the last thing before we go into town, I'm here just a quick update, um, I know the last go around, we were saying with the family apartment units, probably Tim, you. You've brought all the scuttlebutt at the state house level, that those are probably looking to be by right within the next year. Um, the governor's making a big movement to have these be just simply by right, that they don't need permits, we haven't seen anything come through. Um, but the next grouping, we're looking to do that grouping, um, from, we did two thousand and eighteen back. For the next go around for the five years for those permits. And those we decided would be done administratively, we sent those out, out last year, that worked well, so we're gonna continue to do that this year.
Am I right? I'm wishing to adjourn.
Want you to adjourn?